I've been running since 5:00 this morning. I got a lot of work.
All right. Hey, Bill.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
So you know, Bill, Julie Merrill's upstairs, so she's at my house, but Stephanie's setting her up.
Oh, okay, good. And we're gonna have you introduce Jason Wassler, Andy Campbell, Steve Mann. They're gonna make their presentations and you'll make the staff's recommendations. Yep. Hey, Julie.
Julie, do you hear, Bill?
When you want to mute, yours is different than mine, of course, but.
Yeah, so.
How do you mute?
We hear you, Steph. Stephanie, do you hear us?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
I'm showing her.
Hey, Jason.
Hello.
Well, I'll, when we get to the Council Action Reference Contract Number Three.
Yep.
I'm gonna talk about the Milbacher's and Sons in the amount.
Unmuted. It's the opposite of what it says.
But Jason, I'd look for you to talk a little bit about the okay by the USDA to approach Milbacher like we did.
Did you win the club championship, Jason?
I just went up north and played four rounds of golf over the weekend and I played really good on Friday and then by the time Saturday was over, I was ready to give my clubs to somebody. And then I played the, I played on Sunday and the last 11 holes, I was three over with a triple and a double.
Wow.
I played really good, as good as I could play. Yeah. It's a funny game like that, it comes and goes.
Oh, yeah.
You know, someday I'll have as many club championships as you, Bill, but not for a while.
Yeah. Well, it's a funny game because you just remember your good shots and you think you can hit those all the time.
That's right. I was doing some advertising for you though, I have a, there's a guy I was golfing with this weekend, they usually stop someplace on the way down to Indiana each spring to play around someplace and I said, you gotta stop in Vicksburg.
Yeah.
Tell them to call, I had a time for tee times where Tee Sheet has 200 rounds a day, it's averaging.
Is it really?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're about six, I don't want to jinx this, I'm not talking about it.
Yeah.
That's good, though. I think courses are busy everywhere, where we played, it was busy all day, every day.
Yeah. Hi, Steve, how are you?
Hi, Jim, I'm doing great, how are you doing?
Good, good, thanks for your help and such a quick response today, I really appreciated that.
Happy to help.
Carl and Colin.
They signed in then?
Yep. And Rick's on. Thumbs up, Carl, if you can hear me. Okay, Rick?
Carl, come on.
All right. And Colin's logging on as well, waiting on Gail and Tim. I dropped the packet off to Gail about 20 after five that she asked for, so. Gail's just logging in now.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Carl.
Sorry, I had to get my headphones to hook up. Believe it or not, my wife doesn't like listening to these, so.
I believe you.
I do have a flag ready, Bill.
Sure, that'll be good to know.
I see John Gisler on it, but Bill, it's a special meeting, so we don't have, John would have to talk during citizen comments. We have scheduled appearances and that's what we'll go with.
Okay.
Thanks, John, I take it.
Hey, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to level set with you, I noticed that the agenda's from seven to 10, are we expecting to go that long?
Well, I learned through Zoom that it's better to have two hours and 40 minutes I don't need on it versus trying to add to it.
Okay.
That's, that's not a, not a goal that I have.
I just didn't know how, if you wanted me to keep talking or not.
No, I appreciate it. Andy Campbell is joining as well and we'll introduce him, but he'll be on audio. Gail, let me, we'll get Gail and Tim to start videos if they have it. Gail's video's up. Thumbs up, Gail, if you can hear us. Fantastic.
Grab a drink.
Tim Frisbee's coming online. Colin, you're the last one, or can you hear us, Colin Bailey? He might, might have stepped away from the computer. Tim Frisbee, can you hear us?
Oh, yes.
All right.
Evening, all.
Good evening. And Andy Campbell, can you hear me? I think, Andy, you're logged in now, Andy Campbell, can you hear me?
He's muted.
There you go. Yep. He'll on. Thank you, Andy.
Yep.
Oh, there we go.
Jim? Jim, are we recording right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Wonder if that works. I got about two minutes and 30 seconds on my watch.
Yep, Colin texted me, he'll, he'll be on screen by then, I'm confident.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's okay.
I believe, but I'll check, I think the Randy Skippers is actually just logged in on the iPhone. Hi, Dad. And Jeff Ritzman's with South County News, so I see Jeff's on. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Danny, you wanna see this? It's really, you'll hear the voices.
I got one minute before the start of our meeting right now.
Okay. I have a citizen in my left off-camera that didn't have access, so if they have something, I'll just move and they can talk on my screen. So, Mr. Olson. He's camera shy, but there he is.
Hi, Dad.
Hi. Hey, there. All right, Colin's on, so Colin, checking, you can hear us?
Okay, Jim, are we all set?
I, I was just checking with Colin Bailey to make sure he can hear us.
Okay, as soon as you let me know, we'll start.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna start our meeting for Monday, August 31st, the Vicksburg Village Council. I'd like to do a pledge of allegiance, please join me. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
United States of America. And to the republic. For what stands.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Okay, we'll take a moment of silence, and Jim, when you're ready, would you roll call?
Yes. Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Frisbee.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
President Adams.
Here. We have a agenda for tonight's meeting, are there any additions or corrections at this time? Jim, do you have any?
No, we just want to make it clear for our public, we did on the agenda have, in accordance with Governor's Executive Order 2020-75, that it was Executive Order 2020-154 that carried through the ability and extended it through the end of the year to hold meetings virtually. So I just wanted to make sure that clarification was made to everyone in our public, but no, no changes to the agenda at all that was publicized.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion from the council to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, Julie.
Support.
Frisbee, you'll support?
Thank you. Okay, moved to support, we'll do roll call on approving the agenda.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisbee.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
And President Adams.
Yes. At this point, Jim, would you introduce our guests that we have tonight that are gonna make appearances and we'll start the meeting with them?
Sure, and I'd like to, like to begin by thanking each of them, this has been a process that dates back to the fall of 2016 and we truly, as many know, use baseball analogies, have rounded third base and about ready to cross home plate. So, we're gonna hear first from Jason Wassler, who's a Vice President of Prime Newhoff, the engineering firm that has assisted in the development of impacts or needs on the water system. Second, we're gonna hear from Mr. Andy Campbell, who works for a company, Baker Tilly, and we rely on Andy for his advice and experience as it relates to utility rates and the establishment of utility rates for municipalities and they represent municipalities of varying sizes all throughout the state of Michigan. And then we will hear from Steve Mann, who is the village of Vicksburg's attorney and Steve's specialty is in municipal bonds. I'm going to kind of ask Jason to give a brief summary of the background where we've come since the fall of 2016. We'll then listen to Mr. Campbell talk about utility rates and, and then Mr. Mann will be available, reference the bond issues. When we get into the specific council action items, if there are council members that make the motion and second, that will then open up the ability to questions and I'll kind of be the air traffic controller, if you will, upon hearing the question, and we have staff here who's been a part of this through the entire process as well. But hearing the question, we'll kind of, I'll try to direct it to the appropriate person to answer, if that sounds good, Mr. Adams.
Sounds real good.
Okay, hearing that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jason Wassler to give a background and how, how we got to tonight and, and then the, the completion of actually closing the loan, so Jason?
Good evening, everybody. I guess I'd like to start by saying that several years ago, we embarked on an asset management plan that was funded by the DEQ at that time and that program was called the SAW program, which we did a thorough investigation of your wastewater and your stormwater systems and then the following year, I don't remember exactly what year that was, but they, the DEQ came out with a program where they required all water, public water systems to do an asset management plan. So the combination between those two efforts, we were able to identify the priorities in your systems, all three utilities, if you include stormwater as a utility, and through that process, we identified $30 million worth of capital improvements that were recommended for construction or implementation. And at that point, we met, I think, Jim, when you said it was 2016 we started this, or 17?
Yeah, I think Mike Schwartz and I began it and, or probably it began before me, but in fall 16, I think you and I met in 17. But if I can pause one second, we've had Public Media Network join and hit a reactionary hand up. I don't know, we're not at a point that we're asking for questions, or we'll be citizens' comments after the three scheduled appearances.
Okay, so then at that point, we met with staff and identified that the rural development funding program was the best funding program for the village of Vicksburg, the most economical and it's a very popular program, long loan terms, 40-year loan term, low, low interest rates. And so we put together an application on your behalf to fund improvements to all three systems, stormwater, wastewater and the water system, and that included improvements to two major lift stations, the Washington Street Lift Station and the Spruce Street Lift Station, as well as sewer between the two of those, including stormwater and water in that same area, a new stormwater outlet to Portage Creek off of Prairie Street. And then also, it, it was going to include improvements down Sprinkle Road from the Spruce Street Lift Station, and many of, have you, have heard the presentations a couple times before, but we pulled out the Spruce Street Lift Station improvements and the Sprinkle Road improvements for another funding round and focused on the other improvements, including all the downtown work that's got the streetscape that you've all heard about that, water improvements, stormwater improvements and wastewater. And then, and now, what we're calling contract number one. Contract number two was that Spruce Street Lift Station and Washington Street Lift Station, which we divided and included Washington Lift Station into contract number one, and Spruce Street was delayed. And then contract number three includes improvements to this sanitary sewer system in the 22nd Street area to improve the capacity coming out of the new Allen Edwin developments. When that was originally constructed, the outlet sewer, if you will, was sized at eight inch, which was against the designer's recommendation, and now we have to go back and increase that size. So contract number one, in our last, I think that was the last council meeting, we presented the bids for that project, which was in the eight and a half million range, I think it was 8.2 million, which you awarded at your last council meeting, and tonight, we're looking at contract number three, which we only had one bid, which was received on the same day as the bids for contract number one, and that bid came in much higher than we had anticipated. And at the direction of rural development, they had encouraged us to reach out to the low bidder for contract number one and request a bid from them for contract number three. I think it's important to note that we did not release any bid tabs for contract number three prior to that, so we, all that information was held. So the successful bidder in contract number one didn't have any advantage at looking at the other bidder's bid when he prepared his bid. And they submitted that bid and it was about $85,000 or $90,000 less than the one bid that we had received in contract number three. So our recommendation tonight is to award that contract to Milbacher and Sons and they would be your contractor for both contract number one and contract number three.
Okay, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Andy Campbell, and like I said, as we get into each council action items after a motion and a second, we'll be happy to, to provide staff's recommendation and answer questions, but Andy Campbell?
Yep, so I just want to talk a little bit about an overview of the finances tonight and then if you have any questions, council's questions, let me know, but overall, what I want to remind everybody is that the, the major increases that we did to rates have already been done. So we came on with the start of the SAW grant project as well, 2016 or so, and at that time, we went through the whole grant process and we're starting to look at this project and looking at what the finances would, would have to be in order to absorb the debt costs that you're gonna take on. And the rate increase that was done in 2019 is the substantial part of what you needed to do to fund this project. Now, Jim and I talked in May or June of this year about whether or not we should do any, we, the previous analysis, we had inflationary increases every year, keep up with overall operating expenses. We held off this year, obviously because of COVID stuff and, and the finances allowed it to. But going forward, we, we are projecting that the village will have to go back to inflationary increases to keep up with operating and other costs as well, and that's really a, you're keep, trying to keep up with your supplier costs in the sewer side, especially with the Kalamazoo and Portage costs and then just regular, normal increases that you see on a system and also you're trying to cover capital that's outside of this USDA project and other expenses. But there's no action needed on rate increases right now, the, the finances are in place to pay for the bond issues that you're considering taking out with USDA. The overall positive here that I wanted to make sure that I got across to everybody, if you recall, there's, there's a few different steps in USDA's process and one is called the letter of conditions, which basically states, this is our firm offer of a certain amount of money for your project and the interest rate. The interest rate at that time was 3.375%, and we were going along with the assumption that the village would close at 3.375%. It sounds like we're on track to close this quarter, that interest rate changes by quarter, so it's, it's good until November 30, or not November, excuse me, September 30, and the current interest rate is 1.5%. So the good news on that is that we were going under the assumptions on the finances to say, okay, we need to support all these bond payments at 3.375. If we do hit the closing this quarter, you'll be able to close at 1.5%, which they give you the lesser of the two, which is obviously 1.5. That, it's actually some, some big dollars when you're talking about the projects you're talking about. On the, the water interest savings would be about $1.1 million. The sewer interest savings would be just shy of $3.8 million and the storm savings would be about $700,000. So the overall interest savings, if you were to close on those same bond issues this quarter, is about $5.6 million for the life of the loans. So that is a tremendous savings and a tremendous positive when you're looking at doing these projects that we really did not count on until we got closer and closer to the closing date, because you can't, the, like, like I said, the interest rate changes every quarter, if you don't, if you aren't gonna close soon, you really can't count on where the interest rate is at right now. So if we hit this, interest rate this quarter, you're gonna lock in some, and I know it's, it's the same as if you were going, if I was gonna go buy a set of golf clubs at Dick's Sporting Goods and they're knocked down to $800 versus 900, did I really save money? No, I actually spent $800, but the reality is, is that we had the finances built in to pay for the full bond issuance at 3.375 and if you do lock in at one and a half, that is going to be some interest savings, if you want to call it that, and the overall cash flow. So that's some positive news. The other thing I wanted to talk about and just, Jim and I were talking about this the other day, there is, overall, your water rates are tremendously low and I wanted to just give you guys some, some background of it, we work with about 400 communities in the state of Michigan. We work with a lot of the communities in your area. We don't work with the city of Kalamazoo, but we work with a lot of the surrounding townships. We've done SAW grants for a lot of the surrounding townships that are kind of in the same boat you guys are in, working with the city of Kalamazoo. The reality is, is that the city of Kalamazoo, because of the tremendous economies of scale, has significantly lower rates in a lot of areas than a lot of the other communities in Michigan. When you look across the state of Michigan. other communities in Michigan. When you look across the state of Michigan, from our perspective, this is just based on who we consult with, until you get to about third water, you're in the low category. Right now, your current rate on water is about twenty, what's it, about twenty-one and change, twenty-one ninety or so per month. You guys bill quarterly, so you got to make those into quarterly rates for your guys' system. But in terms of monthly rates, you have a very, very low rate on your water side. On the sewer side, I'll be perfectly honest with you, it's not low. And we've talked about this before in your meetings, that your rate is in the medium range, but it's in the higher end of the medium range, being that you're around fifty-two dollars per month. Now, one of the things that we caution in what you have to realize, and in terms of council, public, the village is not stockpiling money. We are running cash flows to make sure that we're paying for our expenses. So whatever we need to charge with the rates, it's not generating millions of dollars that you guys are stockpiling and using for other things. It's to pay for your expenses. The hard part about, when you look at the village of Vicksburg, and I know that you're on the system, you're on Portage's system technically, and you're on the city Kalamazoo system, it's very hard to compare yourself to those entities. The city of Portage has Pfizer, it has huge industry. And the reality is, is that when you have that big industry, most of the time, to use a common term, they're paying more than their fair share in terms of the expenses that they're incurring, that they cause the system to incur are less, significantly less, a lot of times, than the amount of revenues you're bringing in from them. It's just a matter of fact on most large users. It's the same for other systems as well, such as like the big dairy producers in West Michigan and Central Michigan. The same applies with the city of Kalamazoo. They have a huge economies of scale. They're able to charge lower rates because they have a lot of industry, a lot of heavy commercial. When you look at the village of Vicksburg, you got to keep in mind that you're, you have to set your rates to pay for your system. Your system includes costs from the city of Kalamazoo and from the city of Portage, as costs to both treat, in terms of Kalamazoo, and transmit through the city of Portage. But you also have a collection system and lift stations and a bunch of other components that Jason talks about that you guys are looking to improve, that are yours to take care of, that you have to charge the rates to pay for those. So although other communities have that as well, and I know it's, it's not always the best thing that you want to hear from a guy that talks numbers about why we can't lower rates or do anything in terms of rates right now. But the reality is, is that we run the cash flows to pay for the system. We're not running big cash flow positives. We're just making sure that the rates are in place to pay for the current expenses and to pay for what's necessary. So that's my little spiel, and I'll take any questions, if you have anything, in terms of finances.
Okay, if we can, we'll let Steve Mann, I'll introduce him, he'll talk a little bit about the need for bond ordinances and that. After Steve talks, it'll be time for citizen comments. And we have a few citizens on the call, so there's a reactionary hand on Zoom that you can click that, that'll demonstrate to me that there's a hand raised, and I'll let Mr. Adams know that. And it is time for comments, which on the special meeting, we're limiting to three minutes. I would remind the citizens that it isn't a time for question and answers. So if you do have a question, as we proceed through the night, I'll be taking note of that and make sure that we provide the answers later in the meeting. So we'll turn over to Steve Mann, who, again, is an attorney with Miller Canfield, has been instrumental in this process, really appreciated his quick responses and advice, especially in the last couple days. So Steve has, you know, kind of the whole premise of why we need to create ordinances and the different actions tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see council again. I was before you, a year ago, March, March 2019, after USDA obligated the loans for these projects. And at that point, you took the first step in the bonding process, which was adopting notices of your intent to issue bonds, and then publishing those notices in the newspaper as required by Michigan's financing laws. Since that time, you've gone ahead and you've engineered your project and put them out to bid, as Jason indicated. And now we're at the point where we're ready to award contracts and put the financing in place. So in order to authorize the issuance of bonds, and we call them bonds, but really, they're used to evidence your loan. USDA is giving you a loan for each of these three projects. But the village, like other municipalities in Michigan, borrows money through the issuance of bonds. You're actually going through the bond issuance process, we'll prepare actual bonds for closing, and you'll sign those and turn those over to rural development that will evidence the debt. At this point, rural development has approved the budgets for the projects and the loan amounts, and you have three items before you tonight to approve the authorization of the bonds. The first two are proposed ordinances, ordinance two ninety-five for your sanitary sewer system revenue bonds, and ordinance two ninety-six for your water supply system revenue bonds. Both of these bonds are revenue bonds, they're issued and secured by a pledge of the revenues through each of your systems, your sewer system, your water system. The third document you have is a resolution to authorize what's called a capital improvement bond, which will be issued to fund the stormwater improvements. That resolution takes a little different form because the security behind that is a full faith and credit pledge, or essentially a pledge of your general fund. Once these documents are approved, the ordinances will need to be published. And then after that, we'll look towards scheduling a closing date with USDA and your engineering firm, and move towards closing on the loans, hopefully well before the end of this quarter. Along with each of these items, in addition to the two ordinances and the one resolution that I provided, you also have what USDA calls, and what they provide, is called a loan resolution for each of them. It's their standard form of terms and conditions when you take a loan from them. And all those terms and conditions were actually in the letter of conditions, which they provided to you upon obligation of loans back, you know, a year and a half ago or so. That's kind of overview of the documents, the authorizing documents contain the terms that are required by the pertinent statute that authorizes them, and also USDA's letter of conditions. And when we're at each item, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you might have with respect to each.
Super. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Adams, if-
Do you have any citizens at this time that are raising their hand, that may have questions on this, these agenda items?
Sure, we're looking for, if a citizen desires to have comments, again, you have the ability on Zoom, under reactions, to click on that and click a hand raised. And just to confirm, I will ask Ryan Wagner, I see you on the call, if you have a question, give a thumbs up, I guess, or if you don't, I saw a shake of the head, or thank you. I have someone logged on as Deb and Doug. I'll give you an opportunity if you have comments. Okay, Mr. Gissler, appreciate our county representative being on the Zoom call, if you have comments.
John, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. You mean concerning what we've just heard, or the kind of thing I usually bring to the table, which tonight would have nothing to do with the bonding and-
It's just on the agenda items now, John.
Okay, I'll not have anything to say until I get another chance to deal with non-agenda stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Media Network, I'll also inform you, I'll be happy to provide you with my contact phone number if you have questions after even. But if you had comments to make on agenda items, you can raise the hand. Mr. Ritzma, same, same thing, I think. Okay, thanks for the thumbs up. Mr. Adams, I don't see any reactions or citizens wishing to make comments at this time.
Okay, then my plans are to call on the council for a motion for approval of each of these items. After I get a motion and a second, we'll have discussion and then take a vote.
Point of order.
Please.
We have villagers manager, village managers report before we, because you're going to, you're going to-
He's going to-
Review the staff recommendations.
Yes.
Before we, before we take these resolutions one at a time.
Right.
Yeah, we were, if it's, if it's okay with the trustees, as we'll give the recommendation before each item of action leading into the motion and second, and then the discussion, and then the proceeding or succeeding agenda items, we'll give that staff recommendation as well.
So we'll take them one at a time, is-
Sure. Speaking of agenda item nine A, which is contact, contract number three, to wastewater improvements off of Twenty Second Street, that has been identified as critical needs of improvement. Mr. Wassler spoke about that earlier. It's increasing the size diameter of the pipe leading from the neighborhoods off Twenty Second Street into the system. It is staff's recommendation due to interest rates that are in front of us, to go ahead and ask for council approval for the village manager and village president to enter into a contract with Milbocker and Sons in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents, to be exact. It is part of our goal, and we created this special meeting on this topic, to be able to close these loans with USDA prior to September thirtieth. So I'll turn it over to the council, and we'll be happy to-
All right, then I'd like to have the recommendation for the council relative to the contract three, the water improvements off of Twenty Second Street. Is there a motion from the council?
President Adams, Trustee Keller here.
Please.
I make, I make a motion that we award the street utility system upgrade contract number three to Milbocker and Sons contingent upon rural development, approval and loan closing.
Okay.
Was it contract three or one?
Three.
Three.
Thank you.
Is there support?
Reaster, support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments at this time by the council?
Trustee Keller, sorry, Tim. Real quick, Jason, you mentioned that the only bid that you received was significantly higher. What was the original estimate for this, for this contract?
Yeah, the original estimate was about three quarters of a million. And obviously, this is much higher than that. And the big difference in the, in the two contracts, if you will, if you look at it on a unit price basis, is the amount of de-watering that needs to be done to install that, that pipe in that area. And the contractors that have bid on that project have personal knowledge of it, personal experience with that. And so when we did our estimates three or four years ago, the, the unit prices that we used in contract one, we're using contract three. And that resulted in a much lower estimate, which did not prevail, of course, in the bidding climate or in the, in the bidding world. So their additional de-watering costs has caused that to come in higher.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Tim, do you have anything? Because-
No, I think I was going to ask the same thing you were, Carl. Thank you.
Okay.
President Adams, I'd just like to make a comment.
Please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mallory, what's the amount again?
The amount is one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents.
Just like to point out, oh, let me do it this way. Mr. Mallory, can you, just out of curiosity, how long are sewer and water pipes supposed to last?
I think the lifespan sixty to eighty years. I would certainly allow Jason to correct that if I'm wrong. But I think a typical lifespan that has routine maintenance applied to it is in that timeframe.
And how old are these pipes?
I believe these pipes, and first, I think Jason was not, and I want to make sure I didn't misinform, is it, is it about that timeframe, Jason?
Yeah, I think when we did the Saw Program, we used seventy-five years as a life expectancy of that, you know, a pipe like that, so.
Yeah, and these pipes, I believe, were, were put in, in the two thousand five to two thousand seven timeframe.
Okay, so they're, they're fifteen to thirteen years old. Can you share with, with us why we're removing these? I heard that we need to increase the diameter because of houses. But I'm also, I've also heard some additional discussion that the original plat requirements identified the twelve inch pipe that we're now putting in place. So can you explain to me the differences here?
Yeah, the original one identified a larger pipe than is in the ground. I don't want to get stuck on if it was twelve or not. I don't have that to memory. It was certainly one hundred percent a larger pipe. No one on this call, including staff and researching, it was part of the decision, you know, and work for, for the village of Vicksburg. I don't know why that village manager and village council went with a lower sized pipe than was recommended and advised on. All I know is the size that they put in the ground, and in reflection, it was certainly in error.
If, if the proper piping, pipes were put in fifteen years ago, would we, would we, so you're saying we wouldn't need to do this? And if that's the case, even with the additional houses that are being there, would, would the correct pipes have held the projected flow from those new houses?
Not knowing the other variables that might have been a factor back when that decision was made, I think on paper and for this discussion, I, the short answer, I think, is, is that hypothesis would be correct. I, I know the amount of effort and energy that went in with this engineering firm representing the village. I will, I guess, let everyone know that, that the engineering firm we currently have was, was not representing the village back when that decision was made, so.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the answers. And I think we all know, I think we all knew the answers as I was asking them. And I'm doing this, not only do I want it for public record, but I also, for those that are listening, I want, I wanted to also share, this is what happens when people make a bad decision. This is one hell of an expensive error. One million, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents. I would, there's a, I don't know to what level we can, but it would be really nice if someone could answer the question. And I would hope that there's a logical reason. Why did we not follow the site development plans? And I would actually defer to my two colleagues who are, who actually were on the planning commission at one time. If you have knowledge, please share that with me. I don't want to be overly critical here. But the reality is this, we're digging up pipe that's not that old. We're putting down new pipe that is going to last seventy-five years, well beyond any of us being on this planet. And I got to tell you what, you sense my energy. This is the energy that people have been sharing with me, because I've been talking with our citizens about our infrastructure. And I want to let you know this, they're not happy. They're pissed. And, and you know what? To some degree, I, it's legitimate. I would like to throw it out there. Again, I would like to ask Trustee Keller and Trustee Frisbee, you're on the planning commission. Is there any, is there anything you can think of why someone did not follow the site development plan?
Honestly, I can't speak for Tim. And I hate to, hate to say, I wasn't on the planning commission-
And I, I hate to, hate to say I wasn't on the planning commission at that time. So I, I don't know what occurred either. I can tell you that when, when I was on the commission, especially when we were doing with the PUD, we listened to the professionals. We listened to Brian Newhoff when we made decisions. We didn't, we didn't just say, well, that's fine. So honestly, I, I, I don't know why they did what they did. My guess is probably money. It saved them money, but I don't know. Tim, I, I don't know if you've got anything to add to it, because?
I don't, I don't recall it at all, to be honest. And I remember getting involved, the South County Committee during the prairies development out there and the, between the township and the village over that. But that, that was it. I mean, we're a recommending, recommendation body. I mean, we gave recommendations and we didn't pull the purse springs or have any votes as to how it happened. So, I mean, I'd be quite frank with you, this is the first I knew that we were, were even considering we needed to replace that from this derelict of some duties.
If I can add to that, Mr. Holmes? On, on, on that, I, I think all councils, but I'll speak to this one, are dependent on the staff and, and village manager truly. It's only the village manager that reports to the council. And I, I can only describe how I work. I try to put a team together that is more talented and knowledgeable than I am. And I press them to, to deliver excellence. So I can't turn back that clock thirteen to fifteen years. I'm kind of curious, as I was a village resident back then. However, I pledge my word to this council that I have no problem being held accountable for the decisions that we're putting in front of you tonight. I have confidence in the team that we've assembled. I have confidence in this engineering firm that their recommendations are what this village needs for that timeframe. I know we have pored painstakingly over these numbers, especially two years ago, to keep any increases. And these are needed, these are critical repairs. These aren't like where we, we've got a Ford Pino and we're going to move up to, to Chevy Impala or whatever someone's automotive analogy would be. This is to provide the basic services municipality is responsible to provide. Water, we have infrastructure to keep our infrastructure in place. So I don't want to get too long-winded, but I will, using your words, put it on the record. I have no problem being held accountable for our recommendations. I'm asking for you to support our recommendations. And you have your faith in me and I, I pledge that I, I stand by the recommendations.
I, I have something to say about this. I think that I understand what Rick is talking about. And I think that there is a measure of disgust here, but it is done. It is over. And we need to learn from what has happened in the past and not let it happen again. But, but at this point, that has already been done. We know what we need to do now. Unfortunately, it's going to cost us some money because it wasn't done properly in the beginning. But none of the people who are involved here now were involved in that. So we need to learn from it and then go forward.
Well, and, and I will dovetail onto that. That, that's why we've made great strides and, and, and taken this very seriously in the last, at least the last two years that trustee Holmes and I have been on, that, that we are working very hard to be open and transparent and everybody knows what's going on. So there's, there's, there's nothing being hidden here. And the reality is a buck stops with us, period, end of statement. Yes, you're the daily representative of us, but we're, we're beholden to the, to the village residents here. So I, I, I appreciate what trustee Holmes said. It needed to be said for the record and for everybody to understand that this isn't going to happen, you know, people make mistakes. Yes, everybody makes mistakes, but something like this is not going to happen again, not on our watch, at least. I know that with this group.
Exactly.
Agreed.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
President Adams, one last statement.
Colin, Colin, yes, man.
Colin, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, speaking to what you guys are getting at, in fifteen years, is there going to be another group like this sitting here saying the exact same thing? I mean, is, is it possible that we outgrow what we're about to put in the ground is my point?
Yeah.
But, well, factors.
But here's the thing, the site plan called for the pipe that we're going to put in the ground. So the line was fifteen years ago, if we were to listen to the engineers and put in the ground what they asked for, what the developer asked for, we wouldn't be spending 1.2 million dollars on this project.
Right, and I, I fully understand that. I guess my point is that the size pipe that we're putting in right now, is it going to be sufficient for our community in fifteen years?
We, to answer that short, the analysis would support it for, for that same lifespan of, that we're talking about the sixty to eighty years or if we're singleizing it, seventy-five years.
If we don't add a significant amount of citizens.
There's only, there's only so much property that's undeveloped in that area that would attach to that pipe. So that's all been factored in as if potential growth over the same time period. So that, that's factored into the equation.
So you're pretty confident, you're pretty confident then that this will hold for quite a while? In other words, we're not going to have to go through this again in fifteen years?
I am, but it's based largely, and like I said, I have 100% confidence in, in Jason Wassler and his team. So I, I, I pause to make sure he has an opportunity to go ahead and, and answer that more specifically, Jason.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we just did with the SOL program. Not only did we look at the existing condition of your, of your infrastructure, we did planning for you long-term into the future. So all the new pipe that's going in the ground has been sized to handle all the property within the village and any future development. And then also some areas that may be a contributing flow in the future that's not in the village. But all that's been planned out long-term. We're looking at like a hundred-year planning cycle, so.
And just so, just so the rest of the council understands, this also includes what potential is going to go on at the mill. That was right, Jason, that was included in those factors. So they, they, they did a lot of extra figuring and, and safety factors, I'd say.
Absolutely.
Jason, not, not to nitpick you, but I'm just curious how you came up to the, the numbers that the mill is gonna add to the system.
Yeah, so we got a report from their engineer and that's, it changed over the last two years as this project was developed. They came to us with flow projections. We questioned them, we took them for what they told us at first. We questioned them and went back and forth with them. And then we finally arrived at, or they arrived at what their future flow projections were. And then we added some factor of safety to that to make sure the infrastructure that we're putting in the ground through the downtown, routing that sewer to the Spruce Street Lift Station will handle that for a hundred years.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallory?
Yeah, Mr. Holmes?
Jason, just, just for the record, I'm curious, was your organization working with a developer fifteen years ago whenever, when the site was developed?
Yes, we did the development or the design for that developer fifteen years ago. I personally did not work on it, so I don't have a personal account of it. And I, my understanding is that we did have a recommendation for a twelve inch pipe. And at the time, the village engineering consultant, and I don't know the reasons why, unfortunately, had recommended that be an eight inch pipe.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, and I appreciate council's comments. I, I just want to, one thing I'd just like to add is this, and that is, I, I would ask my council members that we somehow, that we have a non-core meeting, meaning that we all not get together, but somehow we have, we, we have discussions, maybe led by Mr. Mallory somehow, where we look outside the box for solutions. And I, I, no reason to get into that right now, but I really think that this is not specific to what we're talking about. This is specific to looking at the issue of how can we best continue to offer the best services in this county? You know, with everything that we're considering. So I've got some ideas. I don't want to get into it with the group, but, but I would just like to throw that idea out there. Somehow we have a non-core meetings where Mr. Mallory leads a discussion with, with groups.
We, we've also, Mr. Holmes, one option, and we can discuss it with President Adams, is we've built in, and I'll have to look at the schedule, but I believe at least one prior to the end of the year work sessions where we can notice it to the public and have a, a full council present on a work session to a specific topic. And we worked in two next January through June of 2021, at least two or three due to having a couple new people on the, on the council. So we can look at doing it in one of those work sessions as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion relative to same?
I just had one question.
Please.
Of Jason, and it's, okay, so several years ago, almost fifteen years ago, a twelve inch pipe was recommended. And from what I understand, when the mill goes into operation with the beer production, that uses a tremendous amount of water. So I'm, I'm just saying, why isn't that more than twelve inches?
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jason to, I'll turn it over to Jason to confirm this, but the mill's flows actually won't be traveling through that twelve inch pipe where it is off 22nd Street. The mill's flows will connect to the Washington Street Lift Station and flow through the interceptor that was part of contract number one that was approved a couple of weeks ago. But I look for Jason to confirm that.
Yeah, that's right, Jim. I think you mentioned at our last meeting that the sewer in the village generally flows in a U direction. It starts in the northwest, flows down toward where Washington Lift Station is or the mill properties at, and then travels to the east and back north to Spruce Street Lift Station. So the mill flow is going to get introduced after where this pipe is at. This pipe is at the very top, the northwest part of your system.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right.
Two different pipes, okay.
Any other questions by council before we take our vote? Hearing none, I'd like to have Mr. Mallory do roll call on the motion.
On the motion for agenda item nine A.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
I apologize, my fellow council members, but I'm going to vote no. And I'm voting no to point out I, how I think the majority of our citizens feel about this error.
Okay, Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
President Adams?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay.
Next item?
Next item is nine B. It's proposed ordinance 295. It was distributed to council members last week for, for their review. We do have the author of that ordinance, Mr. Mann, for, for any questions, but it is a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $8,841,000 for the sanitary sewer system and the junior lien revenue bond series 2020. And that is a cap or a ceiling that it's absolutely not to exceed in amount. And it is staff's recommendation for the council to support and approve that proposed ordinance.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion for the proposed ordinance 295 for approval? Is there a motion by?
Yeah, Frisbee, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 295 as written.
All right, is there a second?
Trustee Keller, support.
They've been moved and supported. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance 295 by the council? No comments? Mr. Mallory, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Roll call on agenda item nine B as in boy, the proposed ordinance 295. Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Adams?
Yes, motion passes.
The next council item is nine BI, I as in Ida. It's a resolution from the USDA that falls under the proposed ordinance 295, mirrors it, whatever. It's a USDA requires this resolution. It is resolution titled 08312020-2. It's USDA resolution for san, sanitary sewer in the amount of $7,595,000, which is, is the amount within that USDA loan for sanitary sewer. It would be staff's recommendation for the council to support and approve resolution 08312020-2 as written and has previously been submitted to the council members for their review.
Trustee Bailey, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded.
Yeah, just for the record, that was trustee Merrill who seconded it. We just need to say the name so the audio will be captured.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Been moved, seconded, is there any discussion relative to same? Council members asking a question or offering a comment? If none, Mr. Mallory, ready for roll call?
Roll call on agenda item nine BI, resolution 08312020-2. Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Frisbee?
Muted.
Trustee Frisbee?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Adams?
Yes, motion passes.
Agenda item nine C is proposed ordinance 296, a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,388,000 for the water supply system junior lien revenue bond series 2020A and not to exceed $841,000 water supply system junior lien revenue bond series 2020B. It is staff's recommendation that council supports and approves the passage of the proposed ordinance 296, which last week was provided to the council for review.
Okay, chair would like to entertain a motion for same approval of 296?
Trustee Holmes, I make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance 296 as written.
Is there support?
Frisbee, I'll support that. I, I just have one clarifying in that line item. Is that not a 20A, series 2020A?
Let me, we have Mr. Mann on the phone, so we can clarify that for you, Mr. Frisbee. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Mann.
Yes, that, that is correct. There's, this ordinance authorizes two separate bonds, a series 2020A and a series 2020B.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments by council? Hearing none, we're ready to roll call, Mr. Mallory?
Roll call on agenda item nine C, the proposed ordinance 296. Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Bailey? Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisby.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
The next agenda item and is nine C, single I, resolution 08312020-3. This is the corresponding resolution from the USDA. So this resolution is a USDA resolution for the water system in the first amount of $1,388,000 that's listed for series 2020-A. Would be staff's recommendation for the council to support and approve resolution 08312020-3.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion for same.
Trustee Merrill here. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 08312020-3 as written by the USDA.
Okay, is there support?
Trustee Reaster, support.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding same? Hearing none, we're ready for roll call. Mr. Mallory?
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisby.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
Next item is agenda number nine C, double little I. It's resolution 08312020-4 USDA resolution for the water system in the amount of $841,000, which is equal to series 2020B. It'd be staff's recommendation that council support and approve resolution 08312020-4.
And what's the pleasure of the council?
Trustee Reaster, I make a motion to approve resolution 08312020-4 as written by the USDA.
Okay, is there support?
Frisby, support.
Okay, been moved and supported. Any comments or questions by council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisby.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is nine D as in David. This is a resolution that Mr. Mann spoke of 08312020-1. A bond resolution authorizing the issuances of $1,402,000 in 2020 capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation for storm sewer improvements. It would be staff's recommendation that the council of support and approve resolution 08312020-1.
Pleasure of the council. Is there a motion?
Trustee Bailey, I make a motion that we approve resolution 08312020-1 as written.
Okay. Is there support?
Trustee Keller, support.
Okay, been moved and supported. Any further comments or questions by council? Hearing none, we'll do roll call.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisby.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is nine D, David, little I, Ida. It is the USDA resolution that corresponds with the agenda item nine D. It's resolution 08312020-5. It's a USDA resolution for storm sewer in the amount of $1,402,000. It is staff's recommendation for the council to support and approve resolution 08312020-5.
Okay. Is there a motion by the council relative to the same?
Trustee Holmes, I make a motion to approve resolution 08312020-5 as written.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second or support?
It's Frisby, I support.
Thank you. We have motion as reported. Is there any further questions or comments by council before we take roll call? Hearing none, we're ready for roll call.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Frisby.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
I would like to take a pause here in the village manager comments and and thank the team that's worked on this, though they didn't speak tonight. Everyone, Randy Skippers has been intimately involved since day one. I started with the village helping me out on this system and his whole entire crew. Michelle Morgan dots the I's and crosses the T's if you can do that in numbers to make sure we're on track. A person wasn't on with Steve Brier. Certainly been present the whole time with Siegfried Crandall, Alex Lee as well. The other thing I think the council and public need to know is it frees up my time to to work quite hand in hand with Jason Wassler, Andy Campbell, and Steve Mann, because the crew that we've assembled just picks up everything else that's going on. And I I know the council and especially the financial committee of the council is aware of the time this past month on this issue. And you heard the amount of savings from Mr. Campbell that we're looking at to get this done by September 30th. So to my immediate staff, I just can't thank you enough. And to Mr. Wassler, Mr. Mann, Mr. Campbell, I have thoroughly enjoyed the educational experience you've provided me by teaching me about this. I, Mr. Adams, if it's okay with you and the council, our items involving Mr. Mann, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Wassner are completed on the agenda. And I I see that if they desired him to to move on to their families or their next work endeavor, we can go ahead and release them.
Thank you very much.
Good idea. Hopefully they got less other things to work on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks a lot. And Steve, I'll be calling you tomorrow morning to make sure we publish what we need to, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Andy and Jason.
Thank you.
The next item on the council agenda is item nine E, Ian as in Edward, on a consideration of a FOIA fee appeal. The council has before it a FOIA fee appeal requesting an unspecified reduction in the estimated cost to compile, review, redact, copy, and produce police reports and records. The FOIA request is extremely broad, both in time and scope. The request reads, each and every police report concerning the following years as issued by each and every member of the Vicksburg Police Department and any records of associated police departments stored and or retained by the Vicksburg Police Department 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and year to date. Though the submission dates at the end of June, we would honor today's date. It also concludes in quotes, please advise if the cost is over $10,000. Because the request is so broad, we estimate it will result in the need to compile, review, redact approximately 41,550 pages of police reports. We believe the estimate of over 41,000 pages is a conservative one. Many of these reports contain sensitive and private information about crime victims, witnesses, children, addresses, phone numbers, dates of birth, driver's license numbers, social security numbers, and other records that could lead to identity theft, bank and other financial records, and information about general and specific police investigation techniques, all of which must be redacted, which is removed before the records can be produced or provided by the to the requestor. We estimate that it will take 692 and a half hours to process and redact the over 41,000 pages. This is based upon an estimate that it will take an average of only one minute per page to review and redact the confidential and sensitive information. The one minute per page is based on the average time the Michigan State Police FOIA unit estimates it takes to process a FOIA request. We conducted a random sampling of our own and determined the actual average is slightly over one minute per page. However, we estimated the cost to process this FOIA request using the lower MSP average. The hourly wage charged on the initial FOIA request was $40.92. This is determined under statute by 100% of salary compensation and 50% of benefit compensation. And so that $40.92 was based on the chief's wage cost as he is the village employee who is the lowest paid village employee capable of performing the review, separation, and redaction of records as required by the Freedom of Information Act. We did not charge for labor cost to compile the records. Based on these estimates, the total cost to process the this FOIA request is $32,492. This represents $28,337 in labor cost and $4,155 in copy cost, which would be a maximum at 10 cents per page. We would actually bill the specific cost of those copies. The FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act permits a public body to demand a 50% deposit from the FOIA requester if the cost to respond to the request exceeds $50. The village asked the requester to pay the 50% deposit of $16,246 before it begins to process this FOIA request. The Requestor then filed this appeal. It is my recommendation as a village manager, based on my reading of all correspondence between the FOIA求者 and the village, consideration of the relevant estimates and cost calculations in review of the applicable FOIA provisions, I recommend that the council grant the fee appeal in part by reducing the total labor cost estimate by $19.27 per hour to respond to this extremely broad FOIA request. This cost reduction reflects the difference between the higher hourly wage charged in the fee estimate for the chief, $40.92, and that of the lowest paid employee in the office, which again is 100% of the salary, 50% of the benefits. That hourly wage would be $21.65 with those two components. The FOIA requires the village charge the lowest hourly rate of the employable employee capable of performing the review, separation, and redaction of records, whether or not the lower paid employee processes the request. I have no doubt that Chief Sanderson will be the employee processing this request, and the fee estimate was prepared in good faith using the chief's hourly wage. However, in the interest of removing any doubt whether the village complied with the Freedom of Information Act, I recommend the council vote to reduce the labor cost by $13,344.48. If the council approves this recommendation, total cost to process the FOIA request would be $19,147.25. The salary and benefit portion is $14,992.63, and the cost of paper copies is estimated at $4,155. The 50% deposit to be paid before the request is processed would be $9,573.83. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Hey, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion on consideration of the FOIA fee appeal as proposed by the village manager. Is there a motion for same?
President Adams, Trustee Keller here. I make a motion to support and approve the staff recommendations in regards to the FOIA fee appeal as presented by village manager Mallory.
Okay, is there a second?
Trustee Reaster, I support it.
Okay, is there any comments or questions by council? I know all have taken a look at this.
Mr. President, Frisby?
Please.
You know, I've been doing some research in the National Freedom of Information Coalition. There's two types of requests that be considered unduly burdensome. The first is a request that is unduly burdensome because the request is vague or asks unreasonable amount of records. This unduly burdensome because the individual organization makes too frequent requests and doing so over as the agency. And this falls into vague and unreasonable amounts of records. And I think we have justification. I've read through this to to push back on this. I I don't know why we would give a cost reduction when we're paying our chief full time. This is going to take 900 hours of 2,000 hours available in a year of his time. I don't agree with. I I question your recommendations. I understand what you're trying to do to 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 be look favorable that we're complying with request. But I think this one truly falls under those categories. You know, I can hear about. One is the burden imposed on the agency weight upon against the public interest for disclosure, disclosure. How importantly, the information requested serves a public interest and the responding agency's ability to show specifically how fulfilling the request would be a burden to its operations. I I just, I question, I know when I see, I read, I heard what you said about your recommendation, but I I still question, you know, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. That to myself is just throwing over a fishing net over a broad area, trying to capture something. What? What are you trying to capture? You know, these are the guys that write the rules for the Freedom of Information Act. They give guidance to people, and this doesn't fall under the guidance. To me, this is far too broad, far too vague, and burdensome.
I I don't think, if I cut you off, Mr. Frisby, I apologize. Did did you have something at the end, right at the end?
No, sir. Thank you.
I just wanted to, and I
I just wanted to, and I don't disagree with you at all, I, I fully agree with you, and I think the chief would. I did review this with our council, who specializes in law enforcement, as well as FOIA, our attorney that we have on, on retainer, and Kurt McCammon for Miller Canfield. So, as well, though I didn't state it, the request talked about some computer system being available to do all this redaction. I did want the council to know that, that computer software package doesn't exist to my extent that I've checked into it, to even set those parameters, how, how to redact that, so that was information. But I did want the council, again, I, I agree exactly what Mr. Frisby has stated. I did want the council to know that I sought advice from a council on this, as well as we developed the recommendations for this body to vote on.
And if I may, real, Trustee Frisby, I don't disagree with you at all. I, I just have a bad feeling that we could be opening up Pandora's Box for even more problems. I'm, I'm confident the manager, Mallory, has, has sought counsel, and, and they, they have advised, go this route, it's, it's a path least resistance, because I have a feeling if, if we don't respond to this, it's in some fashion, it, there's going to be more down the road.
Is there any other comments by council members on this issue? I don't disagree with anything that's been said. Go ahead, Julie.
I just, was this person spoke, has anybody spoken to him to see if, if he could get a little more specific, or what the pursuit is, or what, what he's fishing for, or is that something they're not going to do?
Well, no, we've, we've had multiple contacts that the chief has had with him, as well as an investigator for Miller Canfield met with him on, in multiple contacts, if you count the phone conversations, but in person, and were left with, with his written submission. On, well, I'll hold off at, at, at the end after the council speaks, I, I might add a little bit more not pertaining to the FOIA fee appeal, though. But yes, we've, we've had multiple contacts with them, including from the village and from Miller Canfield.
Okay, right now, I'm just reviewing, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded to support the manager's proposal to us in the written document. Are there any other comments by the council at this time? Any questions for the village manager?
Jim, why, why is it suggested that we cut his fees?
Why we cut, and then the last part, I didn't hear.
I said, why, why is it suggested by staff that we cut our, our?
Because I think the next level of appeal would go to circuit court, and it, though the chief's estimates and written communication with the person was spot-on, it demonstrates when we use the lowest available salary and fifty percent benefit in the office, a willingness to honor the FOIA statute and our own commitment to be transparent. We certainly do not make any money at all on any FOIA that the village receives, but again, I, you know, that, that's the thought process behind it.
I guess my, my point is that we've already seeked counsel on this, I mean, how much, we've already got a ton of money wrapped up into this. I think this is somebody that's trying to waste time and money, that is all.
Yeah, we, I, I don't know the exact motivation.
I hope that, I hope they understand that it comes out of their tax dollars as well.
He's not a citizen.
I don't think the individual's concerned, but, okay, comments from council, questions still? If I don't hear anymore, we're going to be ready for a roll call. Jim, we can do a roll call.
Okay, on, on, on motion of this item, Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey. Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. Trustee Holmes.
No.
Trustee Frisby.
No.
President Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes? Motion passes. I will inform the council that we have honored two other FOIA requests previously from this individual, one for slightly under fifty dollars in total cost, one for slightly over fifty dollars in total cost, and he has yet to pick up those FOIAs. I will also let you know, I wanted to wait till after this action, as those are standalone issues that really shouldn't be considered in your deliberations, but, but to let you know that after, after your vote.
Jim, real quick, when, on the one that was slightly over fifty, did you get half down from him, or no?
We did not, it was close enough that I made the decision, it's not a requirement, and it's slightly over.
With this one, he will be paying half.
He has to before we're even going to begin.
Bailey Rees, I voted yes.
That completes, let me make sure, the village managers' report with the action items from the council, Mr. Adams, and now would be agenda item number ten, citizen comments for non-agenda items, and it's held till three minutes in length. All right, we'll start with County Commissioner Chrisler.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you letting me sit in on this, and it, it never fails to feed information on just how the level of village government works, and it's, it's enlightening, it's interesting, it's got a lot of good things to say about it, and you are wrestling with some serious issues, and I think the degree of deliberation that you put forth is, is commendable. Let me give you a couple of quickies, actually three, from the county commission. We voted at our last meeting to form a reparations commission. I, it passed seven to four, I voted no, I was one of the four, and I find reparations discussions completely divisive and not at all unifying, and Lord knows, we need to unify our country and our county. The airport authority met, I sit with them, I'm not a member, but I'm a liaison, they received a grant from the FAA for a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to test and monitor for PFAS on the airport property. Most of us are aware that PFAS are, have been an ingredient, a major ingredient in the foam that they use for firefighting purposes, so every time they hold a demonstration or a practice, which they do frequently, PFAS gets spread around on the airport property, so they're going to start tracking that. Good news and bad news, in July, airport traffic in terms of passenger emplacements was up forty-three percent, excuse me, from June, July was up forty-three percent, and that sounds good, and it is good, but July of this year versus July of last year was still off seventy-seven percent. So, the number of passengers going through the airport is in a huge hole, we're starting to dig our way out, but we're a long way from being there. And finally, I want to recommend that everybody think about the Constitution of the United States on September seventeenth, that is Constitution Day, and if I am able to connect with you at some point physically, I will bring a whole fistful of pocket constitutions so that we can all remember what founded this country and what, what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, are you there? You're muted again, Mr. Adams.
He's still muted. He's talking away.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Yes. My system crashed on me, so I, I apologize. I missed John's, or all of John's speech.
All right, I, I will, again, yeah, just, we're going to ask, a, a couple people, I again, see someone identified as Deb and Doug, you have the ability, under the reaction buttons, to click a raised hand, or if you unmute yourself, you can ask a, or make comments. And then I would go to the public media network if you have comments to be made, and again, I'll, at the end of the meeting, after the meeting has gavelled to a close, I will stay on the Zoom call if anyone in the media has questions for me. I will stay for a few, few minutes, or as long as needed. Mr. Adams, I do not see anyone else raising their hand or unmuting themselves to make comments, so I will turn it back over to you.
All right, and I'd like to have any comments from the council in closing, I think we're at that point. I can start with Colin Bailey.
I'm all set, Bill, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Carl Keller?
I'm all set, Bill, I appreciate everybody's input tonight.
Okay, good. Mr. Holmes?
I would just like to take a second to explain my no vote on the Twenty-Second Street repairs. I, I realize my vote created the impression I did not support the necessary infrastructure improvements discussed tonight, that was not my intent, and I would like to thank all of you for your yes votes, because the work is needed. I also realize by voting first that I may have put you in an awkward position, and for this, I apologize. I respect all of you and appreciate the professionalism you bring to this council. I, finally, I'd like to believe that my nay vote is instead a statement to the community from this council that says, "We do not support the incorrect decision that was previously made, and we will continue to do better for you."
Okay, thank you for those comments. Mr. Frisby?
Well, I would say, Trustee Holmes, I, I agree one hundred percent with you on, on your statement about having to reinvest into something that should be there another sixty years. A point of clarity, I've been looking in all this time for my time on the planning commission, and it appears my meeting was in November of two thousand and eight. So if Jason's time is right, then that was all before I came on, and as I recall, that in itself is what drove me to become more involved in the, in the daily activity of, of our village government, you know, what happened out there, how it was rammed through, how particular people took control and onus, and, and, you know, others were left to the side, and it drove me to be where I'm at today, so, no excuses, but I just, I wanted to see when exactly I signed up, so it was November, was my first meeting of two thousand and eight, so.
Okay, Gail?
I would just, I, I'm hoping through this that, that our public realizes that this particular council is wanting for sure to make sure that things are done right, and unfortunately, we cannot go back and undo what was done before, but hopefully, they will see that we are all trying very hard to be transparent and to do things correctly the first time. I'm very much with you, Rick and Tim, I, I'm so unhappy that that happened, but it is, it has been done, it's done, and so now we just have to go forward and help people realize that that's not going to happen again, so, thank you.
Julie Merrill?
I, I agree with everything said, and regarding this FOIA, I, I hundred percent agree with the principle of doing the FOIAs, but if this is just a way of harassing, I'm not sure, but I guess if this person can put up the money, then we'll see how important this is to them. Thank you.
A couple comments, I'm, I'm very comfortable that our village manager and our legal counsel in this area are much more adept at developing the strategy to deal with this situation above and beyond the council, so I'm very comfortable in voting yes for the issue on the FOIA. I would like to mention, Julie, that we all gave parting comments to your father at our last council meeting, and all of our wonderful things that we experienced with him over the years, we all missing very much, so. With that, I think we can bring our council meeting for August thirty-first to a conclusion. Those that need to stay on and talk to Mr. Mallory are more than welcome. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
So long, everybody.
Love you, Julie.
I'm leaving.
Jim, can you hear me okay?
I, I can, Jeff.
Thank you for taking just a few minutes, I won't keep you long.
Sure.
Can you just give me a quick explanation on the size of, of, like, where is all this work going to be done, from where to where?
Yeah, and I can, what I'll do in the morning is, I have a map, but it's on my system at work, so I will, I will send a map of that, but the, the explanation, Twenty-Second Street is out in the Centennial or Allen Edwin Development, so there was not only that large development, but the Prairies and, I'm trying, we have two other, we have, the Centennial is on the west side of Twenty-Second Street, and we have two other smaller neighborhoods on the east side. So if you can envision the flow of the village from Twenty-Second Street, which those neighborhoods are at our northwest boundary line, it flows, it flows down to Boulevard Street, or UV and hooks around by the hospital, on Boulevard Street, straight to Washington, and it, it goes into the Washington Street Lift Station.
Okay.
Then the Washington Street Lift Station pushes the flow all the way down to W or Highway Street, which, and, and the reason that was, up until nineteen seventy-eight, Vicksburg had an independent treatment plant that treated the flow there, so all the flow went to the Highway Street.
Gotcha.
After that treatment plant was closed down, the flow continued to Highway Street, and then the U they talk about, it goes east on Highway Street and flows back then north through, catching downtown and ultimately out to the Spruce Street Lift Station, which is located by Brady Township Hall. The Spruce Street Lift Station pushes all of the flow of Vicksburg north through the city of Portage, and then on to the city of Kalamazoo where it gets treated.
And that's wastewater only, or wastewater and sewer?
It's, it's, this is something I had to learn, so wastewater is, is the waste product that's getting treated up in Kalamazoo. Storm sewer is really just storm, it's, it's the rain runoffs that get caught and then redirected out into the watershed in the, the community. So if we talk wastewater, we're, we're talking that product, if especially these engineers start talking- If especially these engineers start talking sewer, they're predominantly talking about the storm. But what's, what the, the background is, we received the results of the SAW grant they talk about was about a million dollars. That was a 90%, only a 10% match. It videotaped our entire system. So it showed the weaknesses in it in real time, if you will, compared to just life expenditures. And we have pictures up on our website, I believe, and I'll confirm that they'll be there tomorrow, of those underground skill snapshots that show some of the reasons that, that the replacement needs to occur. So that analysis determined there was $30 million of critical needs. And that number came about in 2017. We worked with our engineering firm to get it down to basically under 12 million. Predominantly why that was, was all of the flow south of downtown, Washington Street, Park Street and all the core aging neighborhood flowed, flowed, that it met up with the west side or the, you know, the Centennial, the new developments, putting pressure on all the pipes that traveled south to Highway Street. So it, it's a four-phase project. The first phase is out on 22nd Street. Those pipes need, and you heard that discussion. They, 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 with the development that was allowed to occur out there, the, the pipes will be plugged, we're predicting in 12 to 18 months. So that, that is what identified that. When we, what we determined what was best was improvements to the Washington Street Lift Station in what's called an interceptor. So that interceptor pipe is going to flow from Washington Street Lift Station to the Spruce Street Lift Station. So it, it cuts right through the middle. It goes Washington Street to Main Street to Prairie Street and then up through the neighborhood north of the middle school to the Spruce Street Lift Station. By doing that, all of the flow south between Washington and Highway Street, we took all that pressure off of the new development. So then they moved from a critical red and pink color down to yellow and pink. It, it basically put any critical needs in that area off by like 12 to 20 years, which was significant in the overall analysis. Two components of the original, what we were looking at was, and it's still needed, is improvements to Sprinkle Road, the transportation system of that waste from the Spruce Street Lift Station to the city of Portage. Those, those needs are still there, but they're out in the three to five year range. And there's so many factors right now. The South County, what sewer authority, what, what do they do? You know, they were looking at a treatment facility and other options that involve the village of Schoolcraft and other areas. And, and they have some flow in the Sprinkle Road pipe, so it's going to impact those decisions. We think in the next 12 to 18 months, they will be in a position to determine where their flow needs to be, which impacts our decision on Sprinkle Road. So predictably, we're looking at those improvements within a, you know, at a five-year time span for the, for the village. Well, right now, the council approved back in June, the ability to, we are, we're applying for a pretty substantial grant, which is literally, that one's crossing the plate as well. We'll probably announce at the next council meeting, we've submitted that grant. We're, had the initial final review with people in that decision-making process. A very high-level initial one today. And then next week, we'll have the final review before I hit the submit button. So, yeah.
The development on 22nd Street, which is actually north of where I live, I'm in Trillium neighborhood, as you know.
Yes.
Had that not been built, would we be even talking about this right now?
Had Centennial not been built?
Right.
Yeah, no, because that's the, that's the significant pipe that goes through Howard Bailey's farm field there. The village has an easement right in the center of that farm field between your neighborhood and Centennial. So that's the pipe that's going to get replaced. And then it hooks a eastbound turn out to 22nd Street. So we've worked with Rich Bailey, who does the farming for his dad now, to make sure we're coordinate, coordinated with harvest and/or planning. Because when the USDA loan closes in September, we'll begin meeting with, with the contractor to get a schedule down pat on, on what's needing to be done.
Okay. And, and I'm guessing it probably would be well into 2021 that there would be any excavating or, or construction equipment.
On, dependent upon Millbrocker and, and the harvest schedule and, and then weather dependent, there is a chance that the 22nd Street improvements are done yet this construction season. So it's our goal that all of it will be completed by October, late October, early November next year. And by all of it, I'm talking the downtown streetscapes and all of that.
Okay, two more questions and then I'm done. I know there was talk about the eight-inch pipe and the 12-inch pipe. Where, where does the eight-inch pipe end? And where does the 12-inch pipe begin?
Well, the, it's, it's all eight-inch currently. It comes out of the neighborhood. So all the, the houses feed sewer mains that go to this eight-inch. The eight-inch pipe is what goes through the field and hooks to the, to, near the Trillium system. And then it gets to a larger pipe at, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank here, UV that, that heads into town through the entranceway of Trillium. So, so once we get that flow to UV Avenue, the pipes will, are built to handle that, that from Centennial and the Prairies. Why, and again, I, I have no idea why, why they put a pipe four inches less than, than, than what was called for.
Sure, because they should have known the rest of the village infrastructure was 12 inches.
Well, they also had to prove the amount of home sites out there.
Right, interesting. That's, and I, my last question, I guess in terms of infrastructure projects, I mean, this is, this is a big deal for Vicksburg. This is, it's a pretty significant situation.
It's, yeah, I don't want to come off rough. We've been, I, probably the last two years, I'm not exaggerating. It's 20 hours a week of my professional life, easy. And it started, like I said, I started full-time August 1st for the village. And I think it was certainly within a month was my first meeting. And the USDA approved our ability to get a loan in December of 18. And you can backdate that 18 months that we worked on that application and it's, it's taken, whatever we're at here now, another 18 months to dot all the i's, cross all the t's and, and truly asking thousands and thousands of questions to, to the expert. I mean, one, one thing, and you did hear that, that worked out very much in our favor is this, it's, the interest rates have never been lower. And, and we can save just a substantial amount of money.
Well, you know, there's a saying in, in the business, a dumb reporter is a good reporter. So thank you.
I, I, you have my cell phone. I have never a problem with any questions or, like I said, I'll still, and Alex and Michelle and Scott are on the phone. They'll remind me. We'll, I'll zip you a photo where it's highlighted what, what, what the improvements are overall on, on all of this that was talked about tonight.
Okay, good. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Sure. And does Public Media Network, I'm not sure by name who's on the call, but.
It's Kenji. We just had, I, I couldn't get a recording on this end on our laptop. So we were wondering if we could get your recording after, after the meeting is closed, obviously.
I, the recording of the entire meeting or?
The second half, the second half. When you guys, to the different meeting, we weren't able to get it. It wouldn't let us record.
Okay, I, I, help me out. You're talking about this, the, with just us six on the call right now?
No, no, the, the, the regular meeting, the work session we got. And then you guys switched over to this meeting room and then we weren't able to actually get the record going through.
Okay, I, it, for me, I don't know if I can split it. So I'll probably just send you the whole thing.
That works just fine. We can split it on this end, not a problem.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. And then if you have a pen handy, I'll give you my cell phone because it's going to be the easiest way if you need to follow up with me.
Yep, go for it. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and you want me, how about if I give you an email? So then you can email me your, how I email the, the link to you.
Not a problem. I'm here for that too.
All right, my, my email's my first initial J and my last name Mallory. So it's J M A L L E R Y at vicksburg M I, V I C K S B U R G M I dot org.
All right. I'm going to send you an email right now. So that'll be waiting for you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. All right. Thanks a lot, Jeff. All right. And Michelle, Alex and Scott, thanks. I will see you in the morning.
You're good. See you guys.